And.
I got it.
I think the controller is working.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah.
We're good, we got it.
We all set?
You're good to go. Have a good meeting.
Okay. Welcome to the City of Platingwood, Thursday, June 9, 2022. Right here in the Select Board of Meeting Room, I'm Ms. Patricia Lambert. This is my board, Rebecca Lewis, Steve Pritchard, and Boyce speaking, and Irvine. Robert Clay will join us very soon. Is there a motion to approach adjutor?
No.
Second. Moving on, Mr. Pritchard's second by Ms. Irvine.
Want to take a little pop up?
Yes, please.
Miss, Miss Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Miss her, Miss Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Irvine?
Yes.
If you all, you know, follow.
Want to the first Platingwood, you could please be the public hearing for our first item today.
In accordance with Master and laws, Chapter 40A, Section 9 and 11, and Constituent zoning by law, Section 530 accessory dwelling special permit, and Section 940 referrals. The Platingwood will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Thursday, June 9, 2022 in the Select Board's hearing room at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Bushing Highway. The subject of the hearing is the application submitted by the applicant/owners, Steven Caprio and Melissa Booth.
Good job. That's right.
For accessory dwelling special permit located on the first floor of an existing detached barn to a single-family dwelling and property located at 115 Grove Street, constituent property as shown on assessors map walk slash parcel 36-2-2. Plan is currently available for review in the Platingwood office. But others in our interest are as far as going to attend this public hearing. So, quiet.
Thank you. Kevin Gray from Gray Consulting, Representative Steven Caprio, for the special permit request for accessory dwelling unit. We submitted site plans, architectural plans, and a packet that included the purposes of, description of the purposes of the bylaw, and also how we inform the requirements of the bylaw. Includes accessory data, Title V inspection form, passing Title V inspection form, et cetera. Just in general, as you write into the opening, the applicant likes to construct an accessory dwelling in an existing barn. There's no proposed conditions to the structures on the site. So it'll take place in the interior of the building. The, in the setting system, starts Title V inspection. It starts with four bedrooms, which is adequate for the existing dwelling in. The accessory unit, some show on the site plan as well. We have space for five vehicles apart, probably more if you want to be creative. Area, et cetera. Second point to the zoning setbacks, again, no proposed additions on the exterior. The standards for the requirements for the special permit, Section 530.2, these three conditions. I can go through each one if you'd like. I don't know. Review the argument, or if you want to ask specific questions to these that I can address. Happy to do it that way. Good luck.
Karen, what do you want to do? Why don't you try it?
Play on every term, sure. 530.2A accessory dwelling shall be complete separate housekeeping units that function as a separate unit from the primary structure or dwelling. So again, there's a barn in the rear of the project here. They're basically going to frame out the accessory structure. Sheet A2 of the architecturals show that it includes a mudroom, laundry, bedroom, powder room, living room, bathroom. So it is completely separate. Section B, accessory dwelling units created within structures. For businesses, that one does not apply. It's not in the business zone. C, only one accessory dwelling should be created within a single-family house or on a lot. So we're proposing the one. D, an accessory dwelling associated with a single-family house must be located within the interior of and under the same roof as the single-family house in a structure for attached or two or detached structure. So we have an existing detached structure that they're going to partition and improve. E, the accessory dwelling shall be designed so that the parents of the building remains unchanged as much as physically possible. Again, no additions to the exterior, no change to the exterior. It's all being on the interior of the building. F, the accessory structure, accessory dwelling shall be clearly is a voided part of a single-family dwelling. Business, no accessory dwelling shall exceed the maximum of either 750 square feet or 40% of the total square footage. I provided, I provided the math. The assessors calculated the existing primary net area to 2,500 square feet. Forty percent of that is 1,019 square feet. And the accessory dwelling unit is 600, we're proposing 694. So it's 27%, which is below the 40% allowable. Below the 750. G, at least two five road street apartments six shall be available for use by the occupants of each accessory dwelling. As we show on the site plan, we have space for at least four cars, two and two. But we also have an additional one that's largely clear in the area of the driveway. H, the design and size of the accessory dwelling shall conform to all vertical standards in the building planning, electrical, mechanical, fire, and other vertical codes. The accessory dwelling is designed to meet the standards. We will be submitting for a building permit following special permit, and that we double-checked. I, adequate provisions should be made to the disposal of sewage waste drain generated from the occupancy of the dwelling. We've submitted a passing Title V inspection. We've discussed the room count in the application here. The house contains three bedrooms and five total rooms. The additional bedroom will bring the bedroom count up to four total rooms. You can see in the Title V inspection and from Board of Health records that the system starts with four bedrooms.
Board of Health, look at this.
I just thought I had phone call with the Board of Health today. She didn't get back. And they, they have a file on this. I was trying to find out, does it need to be a D restriction? But we covered that in that it has to be all Board of Health requirements and conditions.
Okay. This is why were they applying?
No, we didn't get, we didn't get a call.
Thank you. That, that is the standards under the section of the zoning by law. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Any discussion for the board? Steve?
So water is being done through a typical water connection? A new water connection?
Yes, separate service is required at a 14,000 dollar connection fee.
Yep, the water requirement requires that.
All right. And then is there any new exterior lighting going up?
Steve, you might have that answer already.
There's a door that would lead into the area. It would be quite dark without some sort of lantern outside of it, so.
Yeah, it would be a wall light.
Or the scotts on the outside, yeah.
The, you can see the location of the standards.
No big floods or anything like that?
No, the ones that are currently are the ones that are installed.
Downline?
Yeah.
Then if, nothing's happening to the exterior, it's going to stay the same look as the main house?
Correct.
That's it, for me? How, how is the, so this is currently used as a barn?
Correct.
And there's, so I have a, for the barn, it looks kind of just like the plan that is open. But in the pictures, I see that there's, you know, a second story. I'm assuming that there's a floor, there, there a floor deck up there, is it open to the ceiling?
No, there's a, the second floor of the barn.
So I'm just getting, I'm just a little confused. How is that currently accessed to the second floor of the area?
The unit that's designed for the ADU is on the other side of a wall from the stairwell that goes up to the second floor. The second floor would be accessible only from the other side of the barn, which is basically going to be, say, as a garage of sorts.
Okay, so just, there's just not, there's just not a stairwell showing that there's an existing stairwell.
I think it's on the other one, there might be the, is there a picture of the stairwell on the, that one?
No.
Yeah, there's a stairwell on the plan that you see where the ADU is.
Right.
To the right, where that powder room is, the stair goes right over, yeah.
Okay. And so, and then the attic space above will basically be a continuation of the second floor of the barn space.
Yes.
But the, it's not accessible from human.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then is there a change in, in the crawl space? I'm, it doesn't really, it's not really relevant to the accessory dwelling, but I'm just curious. Is the crawl space, is that below grade or is that, are you changing the elevation of the entryway for the ADU?
Sure. My understanding is that the, there's excavation that needs to be done. An additional foundation will be sort of created in the ADU space. And then that will become crawl space itself if we're not.
Hold on.
Um, I don't.
Yeah.
Into the, yes, below grade.
Okay, so the entry level will be the same, so you don't have, the windows are still.
The window is aligned, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. That's, I don't have any questions.
Yes?
Um, parking. Are you planning on parking any of these vehicles in the barn?
During snowstorms likely, yeah, it's in the.
Well, where is the parking for the existing dwelling?
It's in the driveway leading to that barn. The turnout.
The turnout that goes to the left in front of the barn, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And you know that no one can park an easement that goes straight ahead, that's the turnaround wire block?
Correct.
Okay. I'm not sure that it's really applicable to have two cars parked on gravel or grass or something. I'm a little bit concerned about the parking.
They only need the two spot.
There's room for four.
Yes, Steve, you're absolutely correct. They only need two spots. However, they are also using that same space for the primary dwelling. That is my point.
The room for four in the, besides the turnaround, the driveway that leads up to the barn door, there's, we parked four cars there now. Space.
It's not four, four cars on pavement, on the pavement there.
There, there is. I've been doing it right now, but I have a, a new child and the nanny comes. I have two cars, my two cars, the nanny, and my mother-in-law is over quite frequently.
I mean, based on the ASBIL plan, I think it's a stretch to put four cars there because you can't park in the common driveway easement. And this plan is showing cars parked off the, off the paved driveway. Just got an ASBIL today because the common driveway is still under construction. Yes, it is, it's still under construction.
Okay, have it.
Is that what you have?
Yeah, I have this, I mean, just received today. And the common driveway ASBILs. That's the ASBILs. This is, they're showing that the pavement goes pretty much in line with the, with the easement. I just question it, if, if there's adequate parking.
Did you?
If we knew that there was parking in the garage definitely, then, you know, and it had a garage door, then obviously it wouldn't be, it wouldn't park it. I'm not sure it has a garage door.
Has, um.
Barn doors.
Barn door. Swings?
Yes.
So then it gets a little wet? No, no.
This one swings.
Swings. Wait, actually, don't let it go down. Massive ASBIL only down, please. Thank you.
The barn, the space inside the barn, there's, that's not part of the dwelling unit. The plan is to have concrete and I wouldn't like to park a car in there. I could, I could probably fit without, if I move everything out of that space, there's room for two cars to go in that space. So whether it's inside or outside, I could. My point was that right now I'm parking four cars on the paved driveway already without any issue. But I could also put a car inside the barn after completion.
But you also.
The walls have to be, they have to be fire-rated walls and sealed, right? You're going to park a car. So you have to have it sealed
Yep.
all the way.
That's not part of this existing plan.
And you can park cars in, have it properly done, the dwelling. Because you can make where you want to park them.
Are you all set, Steve? Thank you. I, I see that on the ASBIL, you have sub-circuit drivels. And that's where you're proposing to park three cars. And I'm not sure, is that where you should be parking cars over drivels? Is that okay? I don't know at the moment that those are H20 road. I, I don't know that. So I'm having a real issue with the parking of a ladder wall.
I didn't see the ASBIL plan being.
And it's just, I don't understand why the pavement would not go all the way up to the barn. And also too, why there wouldn't be some type of a turnout to go into the primary dwelling. I mean, this, this just doesn't quite do it for me. Do you want to see the ASBIL?
Sure. Get to your stacking. One, two, three, four. Right now.
Can I just say, I don't buy this house on a Saturday and there are forecast hits. And it's like it goes past the public driveway, and I can see it all the time. So I'm not, well, I can't decide, but I do know that there are forecast that I can pass up on the city of San Diego.
I know there are four cars parked there every day.
Yeah.
But the point is, sometimes they're parked, one, two, one, two. And that is the common driveway easement. And so that, that, that's the issue. They're parking in the common driveway easement. When you, the common driveway easement says there's supposed to be no parking in the common driveway easement. And you don't let other people park in the common driveway easement. And also too, if I may, we have 119 Grove Street right next door. How is that accessed from this common driveway? It shows on the ASBILs plan. It goes, they both share the common driveway. The turnarounds onto mostly 115, but 119 has the driveway in back of the house. Yes, I see it now. Thank you. The garage. Also, thank you. I still question the advocacy of the parking.
Yes, yes, there are, there are requirement to pave the parking area, or are they allowed to park on gravel?
Yeah. We have gravel.
I'm showing before, the vehicles parked off the, on the driveway, and they can park there.
They're on the grass. They're not on gravel, they're not on peystone.
I'm not sure that it's a regulation to do that, if you would.
Can I just make the comment that the ASBIL, where you have the asphalt ending is, is not where it ends, right? It goes all the way up to the barn doors at this moment.
Did you see that plan?
You take a look at it. It's on the ASBIL, and it's not on the ASBIL, but right now it goes all the way up.
It goes all the way up to there? All right. So, I don't know.
There's a whole layer that they dug up for another project.
I'm sorry, did we state that the ASBIL is not really ASBIL?
Yeah, well, correct, right. I mean, I, I don't, I didn't have anything to do with that document.
It isn't? I'm sorry. Where is it? Steve has it. He's saying that this is all paved right up to there. Right, right to, right up to there, yeah.
So it looks like it's showing painted. There's a notch in it, sorry.
I saw the same thing. If, if the.
But this is, this space right here is where four cars are going to park?
Actually, they're showing five.
But they only need four.
I don't understand that. They only need.
Doesn't matter how many showers, what they need, right?
What they need is four.
I can point out, I can point out too, where, where we're parking currently.
I mean, what are you planning? So all four of them are parked on this space?
No, this, we can park here, it's worth here, here, there.
I think the point that Irvine was making is this is a common easement.
So it's there, there, this area is also, of course, well, it's nothing right now. It's there for one, this, this project, but.
Would like to make a condition that we gravel the area off of the, prepare gravel area off of the easement for two, two cars, we would certainly consider that.
Is there a plan change that, I mean, it's, that's a change to the common driveway plan that, you know, that is supposed subject to an order of conditions and, you know, a common driveway and stormwater permit?
Then we'll park on the grass.
I mean, if you want to allow them to change it, that, that's up to the board.
We wouldn't change it without, maybe it shouldn't affect stormwater or the damage, right?
Or do a little project issue, not one has been from game one?
Yeah. It's, the, the lot is fairly, it's a good-sized lot. There is room for the cars. I don't think that's really the issue. It's how we prepare and how it affects other permitting hurdles. I think there is adequate space.
I, I would ask you to look into putting a car into the barn. I would give no house that had that, but I don't know if it was all that safe. It was one of those eighteen houses, so never really parked to stop the car from the garage.
Well, they, they would have to make, building for that, right?
Yeah, it would be really challenging.
So it's got to operate well.
I did forget to mention at the opening that the builder is also in attendance on Zoom. I don't know if he can talk to the viability of having a permitted garage space in that. Jesse, you still, Bill, Jesse Caprio's.
Mr. Caprio? I'm here. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Just wanted to answer one question that was brought up a little while ago. There was a question about the living space and if we were going to convert the existing space to garage space. That was the plan. We have 5 eighths fire-rated sheet rock and also barrier for CO protection going against the new ADU unit. So our plan was to finish off that entire barn floor with concrete, a four-inch concrete pad with poly vapor barrier underneath. Like Stephen said before, he'd have plenty of room in that barn for additional vehicles. I wouldn't want to say how many, but definitely more than one. So that was the plan, and Stephen had planned on putting a new garage door on as well at some point. If you wanted to stipulate that, we could certainly do it sooner than later.
That sounds like a good compromise.
Sounds like they give you.
And we could actually put in a condition that the garage should come back to us. Got one, though, but you, whether you want to do that, you could do that. Karen, do you have anything else?
No, I was just concerned about the parking. And I am suggesting a condition that no occupancy of the accessory dwelling be allowed until the common driveway is complete. Right now, the common driveway is not complete. It, they're trying to get it complete by Monday. But the rain guard hasn't been planted. Rain guard was supposed to have been planted to meet conservation conditions. The rain guard is supposed to have been planted before it accepts water. And I'm telling you, it's accepting water and it works. But it's not, not like, it was not planted like it was supposed to be. There's missing cake pot worm that's supposed to be there as well. So the ASBIL right now is being reviewed for the common driveway under the common driveway stormwater permit. And I got it today, it's being reviewed.
So you see, I'm, we have to, we have to explore it, we'd explore it as well. So everything is contingency, so maybe kind of a case.
Yeah, I mean, I've been looking through that project for two years, so I understand the thoughts.
So we're going.
I think, I think it's quite possible to just condition it on completion of the driveway. It sounds like we should condition it also on completion of the parking.
Parking, absolutely.
Even if they kept grass in that area as opposed to moving concrete or pavement up to the barn doors, couldn't they like set a, like a paver base that threw grass through? One of those honeycomb, kind of plastic base?
Well, you probably could do something like that, but you have underground infiltration chambers in the area over where they're showing the cars parking those.
Yeah, I, I would worry about that.
And so, you know, and we don't want those to be squished.
I think it's pretty easily analyzed, but we prefer to stick to parking in the garage since that was a future issue. And instead of having multiple iterations and making those adjustments here on the fly, I think would rather stick to moving garage portion of the project up in the timeline.
That's good. Hi, let me have a little change of plan before we go ahead. Everybody's going to read eight decisions in the line. So, Mr. Clay, if you'd like to crack a first chapter of the draft of this project, please.
Sure. I move to make the following findings of fact. On May 10, 2022, applicant owner Steven Caprio, Caprio, applied for a special permit for attached accessory dwelling on the property at 115 Grove Street.
Yes.
Okay. According to the town's constituent, constituent assessors records, and the D, the property at 115 Grove Street is owned by Steven A. Caprio and Melissa D.
Could you supply that name for us, please?
Uh, food of all.
Food of all.
Thanks.
Both owners signed the accessory dwellings special permit application. Based on floor plans submitted with the application, the Plating Board finds that the common area of the accessory dwelling to be 694 square feet. Floor area of the primary dwelling is 2,548 square feet. The accessory dwelling is 27% of the floor area of the primary dwelling. This means the size requirements of 530.2F of the zoning by law for accessory dwellings as the bylaw allows 750 square feet or 40% of the total floor area of a primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing symphony hall. The accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate housekeeping unit and will be on one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five. The property is in the residential R1 zoning district and the Water Resource Protection District. The property is in the residential R one zoning district and the water resource protection district is zone two. The proposed accessory dwelling structure needs all road product setbacks, uh, building paint, no finals for primary dwelling. Six. The proposed accessory dwelling is to be located on the first floor of the existing barn to the north side. Access will be via a door at the side of the house, off the kitchen and the door off the mudroom area to the rear of the house. Seven. The appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight. The plot plan for one fifteen Grove Streets in Massachusetts done by Great Consulting LLC dated April fifth, twenty twenty-two shows the location of the primary dwelling and the proposed accessory dwelling. The plan shows a driveway which can fit three parking spaces on the driveway and two off of the driveway. Parking is shown in the common driveway easement. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling. The applicant owner had, number nine, the applicant owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that he will continue to occupy one of the dwelling units on the premises in accordance with the constituent zoning bylaw once the accessory dwelling is completed. Ten. The accessory dwelling will be serviced by a town water and a private septic system shared with the primary dwelling. Water department has commented that a separate water service is required for the accessory dwelling along with a fourteen thousand dollar connection fee. A four bedroom septic system passed inspection in twenty twenty. The primary dwelling has three bedrooms and the accessory dwelling will have one bedroom. Number eleven. The application meets the standards of the constituent zoning by law for an accessory dwelling special permit.
Second to discussion, number six, um, number eight. Um, I think it should say this does not appear adequate in terms of parking because we are conditioning this further on. Am I correct, Karen?
I would be right this to say that the plan is two, two parking spaces in the barn and two parking spaces out.
That would be the conditions, Steve.
But that's the plan, I'm sorry, but that's the plan you said to your, right? We will condition that it get done.
I understand that that's not part of the final's fact.
It is, you just said it, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. So, what, what do you want it to say?
It says the plan, the applicant has represented, right? That the, uh, the parking will be two parking spaces in the garage bench for parking and two on the, uh, driveway outside.
So change the second sentence to be, the plan shows a driveway which can fit two parking spaces on the driveway.
Not the plan, the applicant, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Has represented.
I do think we could fit three outside, but I am showing five, I figure you fit three on the patio.
So you're saying random output one in the garage?
Please put two in the garage.
Sold.
Thank you. All right, so can I read what I think you guys just said, so we make sure that we have that right? The plan shows a driveway which can fit three parking spaces on the driveway. The applicant has represented that there will be two parking spaces in the garage and three in the driveway. This, um, no parking is shown in the common driveway easement. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling.
Four.
Okay.
Not well set, basically.
So you need to vote the findings.
Yes. I need to vote the findings back, anybody have comments? Rebecca? Ben? Ian, you want to say that? Bob?
Second, there's a minute. Okay.
Mrs. number?
Yes.
Mrs. Burtrick?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yep.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Burbank? On the paper. Ian, on the paper.
Go ahead, Rob.
I move to approve the special permit for accessory dwelling at one fifteen Grove Street with the following conditions. In addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning boards after a public hearing on twelve seventeen, two thousand and fifteen. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially confirm, conform to the plan submitted with the application by JP Caprio, Caprio Builders Incorporated consisting of plan for accessory dwelling buildout inside existing barn. Foundation Plan Page A O dated three seven, two thousand and twenty-two. First floor plan, existing A one dated three seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Floor, first floor plan dash new page A two dated three seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Building sections A four dated three seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Main house first floor plan dash existing A five dated three seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Main house second floor plan dash existing A six dated three seven, twenty-two. Plot plan for one fifteen Grove Streets in Massachusetts by Great Consulting LLC dated April fifth, twenty twenty-two. Two, the number of bed, excuse me, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plans submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide an notarized affidavit that an owner is living in one of the dwelling units, a yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March first yearly. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, Zoning Board of Appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Seven. Water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW Water Division for the accessory dwelling. The DPW is requiring a separate water service for the accessory dwelling. The connection fee is fourteen thousand dollars uh, to be paid to the town and constituent Water Division prior to any building permit issuance. Eight, all lighting installed shall be downlighting not to shed light on abutted properties. Nine, no parking is allowed in the common driveway easement for the common driveway agreement. Ten, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM on weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state, and federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Eleven, runoff for the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the problem. Twelve, erosion and sediment control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. So, siltsaw shall be used as necessary. Thirteen, a certificate of occupancy shall not be issued unless and until all construction is completed for the common driveway and the conditions have been met for the site, plan administrative review, and stormwater permit for the common driveway.
Discussion? And then you wanted to add another condition?
Yes.
The garage shall be completed for parking prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling unit to provide adequate parking of two spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling at a minimum?
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
All right, I'll go about, um, wait a second, sorry. You all set, Karen?
Yep.
Rebecca? Will you even say the common driveway? Would you want to make a condition upon the common driveway, did you just say that?
The thirteen.
Oh, thirteen, so. Yeah, thirteen says that. Steve?
Um, let me just, uh, respect the planning board, I would add the planning board to item number five.
It could be, yeah, that is true.
Um, is the rain garden and the four to six trees part of the, um, common driveway?
Yes.
That's all set, so we don't?
The trees are coming next week.
Okay, and the rain garden is part of the?
Rain garden is part of the drainage for this, they have, they have to meet for the common driveway. The planting is required as part of the conservation commission order of conditions.
Right. The not meet a lot, which.
I just said.
That part says.
Yes.
Yep.
What we're doing is we're saying that all the stuff for the common driveway must be done.
Right.
Prior to occupancy, so it's signing off on the asphalt for that is part of this. That's all I was doing, was clarifying that, Karen, thank you. So, do we have a second? So, Mr. Burtrick, second?
Everybody's good.
Okay, um, Hater, Ms. Burbank?
Yes.
Mr. Burtrick?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Ms. Burbank? And a sound board.
Thanks everyone, thank you.
And this is your actual. So, forty-five, a little behind, we have an informal disclosure of sixty-one new driftway. Are the applicants here, please?
May I ask, do you want me to, um, put their stuff up on this board since, so that you can all see it better?
Sure.
I can share a screen?
Yeah.
Then you can see it. And you want to talk to this board or sit down?
You want to talk to it? Sure.
What do you want, Hater, at first?
The site plan, yeah.
I just feel like that's a little and none of them can see it, so I'll get the benefit of that.
Sure. Yeah. I'm not sure if I essentially think that color version is the black one, but it's fine.
I think that's.
The same thing. The same thing.
Good evening. Record on Gregory Morris, registered engineer Morrison sharing with me is the property owner, John Tedeschi, as well as the architect of the project, Jamie Kellner of X C Architects. We're before you for a preliminary, preliminary discussion regarding the property sixty-one new Driftway. Our intention is to come back with a formal split within probably the next two months to take any input that you have tonight and revise our plans and make formal submission. The property sixty-one new Driftway is the corner of the old Driftway and the new Driftway intersection, uh, right next to the Drew Company Project, right by the MDTA station. This property is thirty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven square feet in size, it is higher than Upland Land area. It was previously developed with Celtic Pause, uh, doggy daycare, as well as a back portion of the property was developed in part of the MDTA parking lot itself. The asphalt, uh, still remains intact as part of the parking lot area. It's in the G D G N D T V zoning district, uh, which allows for mixed-use buildings at a rate of sixteen units per acre for residential, uh, up to a maximum of thirty-six units per acre with a special permit. The proposal here is to site a new building on the property, uh, as you look at the plan, you see the building kind of in the lower left corner of the, um, lot. The building that we're proposing is a total of twenty-five units, uh, that's broken down to seventeen one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. It also includes approximately forty-two hundred square feet of first floor, uh, commercial space.
You say units, apartment?
Right, yes, residence. And then the commercial space on the first one.
Apartments or condos?
I think it's our, it's our intention, I believe, for rental apartments.
I, I think apartments, uh, although at this point, if I can say, well, you know, take away the, uh, the opportunity of the market would be better for condos, but at this point, I would say apartments.
Access from the site we're proposing in, in and out, we press off of new Driftway, you'll see two-way, uh, access driveway in at the bottom of the page here. We're proposing a single exit from the site onto old Driftway at the top of the page. We propose a total of forty parking spaces, while this unit layout requires thirty-eight point four spaces in total. Around the parking lot, we have landscape areas, around the building, we have landscaping as well as some outdoor amenity space, which would be patio area, bench area. Other outdoor amenity space is actually, it's part of the building, there is a proposed roof deck, which is rather large in size. Jamie will pull over that when he goes over the architecture. We had met preliminarily with the town planner and chairman and Ms. Burbank earlier regarding this project, we did incorporate some of those comments and we submitted this revised plan. Couple of comments that had come up before were incorporating, um, EV charging stations within the parking lot. It is our intention to provide a minimum of two, if not four, uh, charging stations, uh, within the parking lot layout. There was discussion regarding a little bit of a change to the architectural unit layout, we had proposed originally all one and two bedroom units. Uh, we've since revised that, uh, to include two three-bedroom units. Uh, we've incorporated kind of a, a package delivery or a postage room on the first floor for drop-off package, email delivery, and then made some small revisions to the parking layout, incorporating turnarounds at the end of the parking aisles adjacent to the Drew Company project. I'm gonna turn it over to Jamie, who will go over the architecture of the building, I think you're gonna be pleased, it's a very tasteful building.
Well, we created a color rendering view, which would basically be the view that you would get coming down the new Driftway, you know, from the robbery. Trying to kind of pick the angle that shows, you know, the best, uh, you know, view from the car or something like that, so. This is really the corner, you know, that we see as the face of the building. And we've kind of created this to be sort of the front, you know, that you would really get the most, you know, architectural, uh, architecturally pleasing view from. As you can see, we've incorporated some, some front porch areas and, you know, on this side, some balconies that come out and like activate the street front. I know the building on the new Driftway is set back the required five feet. And we've created this kind of corner plaza to keep the building, you know, from getting really crunched into the corner there. And we see that having some nice sort of, you know, patio surface with some plantings, benches, and, um, you know, just kind of doing the best we can to create a little bit of a, you know, walkable, activated street front for the building. Going into the plans, uh, for the first floor, as Greg mentioned, we have forty-two hundred square feet of office and retail space, so we've kind of divided that up in a way that we see as sensible for the time being. You know, the way those spaces divide up can, can be, you know, changed, but, uh, to the rear, we have four units, residential units, and then we have our two, you know, circulation cores here. One of the units that we proposed that goes a little closer to the street, we're actually proposing as a live workspace for so we can have a small office that was, uh, adjacent to the commercial corridor. The residential entrance for the majority of the apartments would be at this rear corner with the elevator, a mail center. And that would be kind of private to the residents rather than open to the public. And those are all single bedroom and a bit up higher, the second floor. See the units have some balconies, you know, makes it one, two, and three bedroom units on that floor. See the units have some balconies, you know, makes it one, two, three bedroom units on that floor. Similarly, oops, sorry, I'm upside down on them. We have ones and twos on the third floor. And ones and twos on the fourth floor. Where we now see the rooftop, uh, amenity space, uh, which, you know, essentially is something that came from stepping back of the fourth floor, which is a requirement on, on the zoning regulations. So, you see here, essentially what we've created is two and a half story building that comes up to the street front. Where, yeah, the third floor kind of creates that half-story look as you see the building from below. Fourth floor is pushed back on both sides, since we have a corner lot, to try to keep that visibility down from that ground level. We are showing some mechanical areas, we're mentioning split systems for heating and cooling in the units. So we've tried to identify more than enough area to accommodate those condensers. Then we have a penthouse that we're proposing for the top floor, which is a just under fifteen hundred square foot two-bedroom unit. Elevator and stair access moving all the way to that level. These two elevations that you see here are the two kind of front elevations. This narrower elevation being the old driftway side, this is the new driftway side. We've tried to create kind of a New England shingle style look to the building within the zoning requirements, it's a bit challenging, but we've done a pretty good job of doing that and, for building heights, uh, we've tried to keep the building, you know, fairly down lower even than some of the required numbers. So, for the main E line of the building, it kind of wraps around the whole, whole corner of it. Let's see, we're at, uh, twenty-one foot, four and a half inches, uh, E line, rather than the required twenty-five feet. That's where that main roof starts to slope back for the third floor. The overall building height being four stories, we're at forty-three seven, opposed to the forty-five maximum requirement for a floor. And then with the penthouse, uh, requirement being ten feet, we're at nine foot six to the midpoint of a sloped hip roof, hip style roof on that. Elevations of the rear and sort of parking side are not quite as exciting, but we've done the best we can to incorporate some balconies, some different roof lines to break up that, that side of the building, some, some little awning roofs and.
Are our, are we on leave, piano, four feet?
Four stories, four feet, that's the height.
That's it.
Uh, for our.
Twelve. Okay, so you, you said you have to read the penthouse by law, you can't see it from the side of the street. I'd love to, I love the idea of green deck on top of the living room, just with that. The overall height in that penthouse could, could challenge you.
Our understanding is, sorry, our understanding is that forty-five is the, is the maximum.
Look at the table that shows you on the mixed-use, um, of the family building, and it says four stories, forty feet. And the table is seven fifty point six, somewhere around there.
Page one.
I apologize, are you still getting confused with all the sections?
Right. Hey, set that step back, um, diagram that you're referring to, just mislead it. Because you cannot have a forty-five foot building. Look at the table, table one B, and it tells you a mixed-use building, the maximum height is four stories, forty feet. It's, uh, section seven fifty point six.
Right.
Okay?
Now, that forty feet would be too, too big for a sloping.
But whatever, whatever the height, whatever the height is defined in the zoning bylaw, is, if it's a gable, it's a certain, you know, you get extra height from the top. Well, that's defined in the definition, in the definition section, according to the measure of height.
Yeah, I think in actuality, to the midpoint right now, we may be close to forty-one, forty-one and a half. So I think we should be able to adjust that to, to meet the requirement.
I have to say that I appreciate you cooperating through bedroom units, you know, I just appreciate that.
As far as the penthouse goes, um, you know, we've made every effort to make that completely disappear from all the major street views. As far as the parking side, the part of the building that you see on that side is technically the stair core of the elevator. So, you know, moving that, I, I know that somewhere in here, there may be something that, describes that those elements don't have to meet all the required requirements. So hopefully, that piece of, of the building being on that back corner would, would help us in that, in that respect. Otherwise, we can certainly adjust the, the main height at the fourth floor by just lowering some of the ceiling heights that we have going.
Right, the penthouse can't be visible from the perimeter of the property line along the sidewalk.
Right. So I, I, I would think that we're, we're already achieving that.
I think you're gonna have to prove it to the panel then.
I, I would leave, go about doing that.
Well, you may have to make a model, or you may have to show section elevations, but that, that's.
Yeah, as I, as I mentioned, two corners of the property, if you connect the, the view, it doesn't need a big, a big account. So the penthouse itself, I'll start with this plan here. Essentially, the interior of the penthouse we're seeing on this side. This part here, we have essentially our circulation core right here. So, could there be a glimpse of this part here from somewhere over on the sidewalk there?
Perhaps, but it's very minimal.
Well, you're gonna have to prove it to the board.
Can I ask a quick comment, Karen? Um, I don't, we'll say it, but look at the building, it's very attractive, you guys say that we're a job right now. Karen, I'm sorry, in regards to the penthouse, can you just clarify for me? Can you be across the street and see it, or the sidewalk? When you say sidewalk, are you saying sidewalk?
I'm just reading exactly what it, what it says in the zoning bylaw.
No, I.
It says the sidewalk along the property line, from, from the property line, the sidewalk in front of the property line, you cannot be able to see the penthouse.
Okay.
So it's just property line, if the sidewalk goes, um, old driftway and new driftway, anywhere along that sidewalk, you cannot be able to see the penthouse.
Yeah, a few questions. One is, when you come back in, can you give us a view of this as it's integrated with the view going up towards the Drew Company as well? So we can see the integrated piece.
From over there?
Well, just kind of on the street, sure, and, and how it looks integrated through the street.
You mean with, with that other building?
Yes.
Oh, so.
Yeah, I wanna see the streetscape, basically, is what I'm trying to get at here.
I, I don't know if we have access to like the finished product of that building, but.
I think we have, we have Josh.
Great practice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, best we could probably do is take a photograph like what's there, because otherwise it'd be modeled on.
How, how we, how we do it. That's fine, I wanna see the integrated piece. The, um, the rooftop terrace, I, I didn't quite get that. Is, is that only accessible to the residents, or is that?
Yes.
Accessible.
So all the residents would have access up to that?
No public access.
No. Uh, yeah, they have a sort of a.
That's a, that's a resident amenity, that's not a public.
So, yeah, from, from the.
That's not a public.
From the stair or the elevator here, you have a board. And then we've kind of discussed some sort of, you know, tables, gardens, different, you know, different elements that we have for that.
The, um, so I, I noticed somewhere, I think I saw you post public amenities as, um, a new sidewalk? Did I see that right?
Yes, one of the, um, public amenities that we're looking at, right now along old driftway, there is a sidewalk that essentially starts at the Drew Company. It traverses this site, actually, it's not within the roadway layout and terminates at the intersection of old driftway and new driftway. What we'd be doing is we'd be creating an actual easement, granting the town easements over that sidewalk, where it is on this site, formalizing that. And then we'd be installing a new sidewalk along new driftway, that's what you see depicted along driftway.
And is there, is there like a sidewalk design that is gonna be sort of meticulous, or what, what does it look like?
So it would essentially connect to the property line of the Drew Company next door. I don't know if they have plans to connect a sidewalk along new driftway or not. I do know that at the intersection of old driftway and new driftway, there is a crosswalk and then directly across the street is the multi-use trail, you know, all the way down to Harvard at that point. There is no sidewalk further up new driftway toward the golf course on that side.
I, I would like to make a comment that, um, as we move further, further to these projects, they become lateral-lateral. In my opinion, a sidewalk is not a public benefit, it's, it's part of dual business to need a sidewalk to get your house, integrated to your business. So I would appreciate your working to rehab that, um, I personally would not take that as a public benefit. It would be a, a part of dual business, and it is a pedestrian area, what is that called?
It's a pedestrian frontage zone, so there's possibly a sidewalk there anyways.
Yes, so you need that.
I have asked EPW to do some research on the sidewalk that's on old driftway. They've done some partial research and, um, there was supposed to have been a taking by the MBTA, the taking, we think, has not occurred. And that was supposed to be, they were supposed to take, you know, so the sidewalk would be in the public right of way.
Yeah.
When the MBTA was done. Sean can't find that, he's looking for it, and so, um, I would have to say that, I think it's part of dual business.
And, yeah, I'd like to, as you come in, I'd like to see what final design that was. Uh, question for you here in terms of the parking and all of that, is taking out, what was MBTA parking? Was that already, was that already planned? In other words, the MBTA knows they're losing that parking?
That parking was never part of the MB, the MBTA still gets the spaces that were reserved for them on the Drew, on the Drew property.
So there's no impact to the MBTA parking?
Not that, not that I don't wear off, no.
Ben?
Um, I think in general, uh, I like the concept at first pass. The, so I really like the floor up to the, I guess, the top of the gable of the third floor, but from the fourth floor to the penthouse, um, I'm kind of, it's kind of lost. I mean, it seems like just a little bit too much mass. And I'm sure Greg was probably aware, because he falls with that word, but we're actually discussing later tonight whether we're gonna make change, propose change in the next half day about the penthouse issue, because we're starting to realize it might not be tenable to meet those requirements of not being able to see it from the street for the majority of the properties in the green area, and also just to not have the high, not have a high restriction, we're realizing it might be problematic. So maybe, I can't speak up with members before, but I, I feel that the penthouse in general is a little problematic. And I think that, um, it, it, it kind of detracts, I'm not very developed financially obviously, but detracts from the look and feel of the building by kind of adding it in. And then, um, just the, you know, maybe if that wasn't there, maybe the fourth floor could get modified a little bit to, to kind of tighten up the look a little bit. Other than that, uh, generally, I think the concept is good. I would always like to see, you know, to maximize the use of space for the mixed-use part. So I'm sure you're meeting the minimum requirements, but, uh, as much floor area as you can devote to places of commerce for this town. And areas of, of Harvard, I think would be appreciated for a lot of small business owners in town. There's definitely high demand for it. And then, uh, obviously, you know, you're gonna have to keep in mind what you're doing for, for the units. Do you have a future in that part of the block? Greg, do you have any thoughts? Just very high level of how you're gonna deal with the stormwater and kind of the site landscape and everything.
Yeah, I mean, high level on the range, this site is pure sand and gravel, you'd be infiltrating all of it beneath the parking lot chambers.
Did you, um, did you guys, um, address affordable housing?
So, within the twenty-five units, I, I think the bylaw calls for three units that would be designated as affordable.
I know it calls for more, but you're asking for a density bar, so you need twenty percent.
Whatever the requirement is, would you leave the requirement, if it's three or four, whatever. That's all.
Yeah. Um, I agree with Ben in terms of up until the local third floor. It just looks almost too industrial. I mean, it's big, it's massive, and I'm not sure that that's necessarily the direction. I mean, I like the concept from the corner and how that looks, but as it goes up, it's almost too much. It, it's too massive. In point of fact, I think it's almost too big. And the other thing I want you to be very positive of is the parking. Parking can be a real issue. And I'm not sure that the parking that you've got going on there flows as well as it could. And it's something I think you really need to be cautious enough. Thank you. Bob?
Uh, I like the building, I think it looks good, um, and then I like the plan. The only, uh, only question that I have, and just, not that, you know, looking for a certain answer, but I'm just, I know we're gonna see a lot of this like going forward with a, with a mixed-use building like this, if you're gonna have EV charging stations somewhere in the parking lot, how do you, how do you actually, like, how do you deal with that conundrum? Because you're gonna have non-residents, uh, business owners, and then also residents moving in, so. I'm just interested in like how you think you're gonna do it.
We're, we're still, we're, we're still thinking that through, I don't, I don't have a solid answer on that.
Is the intent that, um, the parking on the side is more commercial or back as the residents, or how, how you make it up?
I think that the intent is more that the parking, as you pull into the site, as you go to the right, those would be essentially reserved for the apartments. You would have a designated parking space associated with your apartment unit. None of them are spaces. And under space, exactly, and then out back would be more of a commercial spaces.
When you say out back, you mean with the.
As you exit toward old driftway, yeah.
So on the side, on the side.
Um, since that's one way, would you be, would you consider doing, um, drive-in parking? In other words, face forward, instead of parallel parking?
You mean angled, pardon?
Angle, thank you, angled parking. Because they all have to back out and then go out that way.
That's, that's something we looked at originally. You lose a couple of parking spaces doing that, and it adds a little bit more impervious area to the site. But we can certainly take another look at it, absolutely.
Overall, I really like this building, um, because it's a big building, I would suggest an possible design review, like we do every other big project out here. I think, based from what I know, they have kind of like this, this building. I, I think that there's nothing, uh, like I said, I think the penthouse is a little, um, I, I know what you're reaching for, I, I get that, and I love the green space, but this is just very ordinary, and I really appreciate everybody coming in and giving their thoughts, Karen.
Yeah, um, some of the comments that we're hearing from the public on some of these buildings that I think you should just take a look at is, well, I know that this building needs the setbacks, I, I understand it does, but the perception is going to be that it's too close to the road. And like we heard that with the gas station, we heard that with Drew. So I'm just saying, there's a perception out there that some of these buildings are close. So I'm just saying, there's a perception out there that some of these buildings are close to the road. I would think that that's going to be the perception here because New Driftway is particular business. So you might just look at that to get. You'll be needing traffic study. Um you'll be needing water and sewer studies. Um we have a, we have a set scope for water and sewer studies. Um so you'll be getting the same scope that um we've already given for other projects. This does require a density bonus and, excuse me, I would ask the board to really think about what you're going to want for that. And the affordable units, because you need the density bonus, it has to be 20%. And a fraction of a unit counts towards a whole unit. It goes, it goes up. Any fraction of a unit goes up.
You don't step back?
I mean, so just and the public amenity space, make sure it's really a public amenity space. You know, landscaping with some trees, make your outside area so it's inviting. So that people will want to linger in your space with the commercial uses there. Since it's pedestrian oriented, hopefully, you know, people park once and can more eventually visit several of the buildings.
Just on the comment about how folks, you know, whether it be setbacks and all that. I guess I'm I'm not um. I'm not seeing necessarily who's going to push this back. And it's kind of, that's the, that's the line, you've got the setbacks, the way they work, make it even more like sort of a town center.
Well, I I under- I understand that, but there's, I'm telling you what we're hearing from a public perspective.
Yeah.
That the building is too close. You know, there's a difference between five feet and 10 feet. And um maybe it's just people getting used to it, but it's, I'm just telling you about what.
Okay, I'm just telling you my, sort of my perspective on it as well.
Maybe we should change the bylaw then, because if our setback is five feet, then then I'll probably give it a wrong, so maybe we should. I mean, that could happen.
So I I I'm just, I'm just telling you what what we're getting from comments based on the gas station and the and the Drew company.
No, no.
So just just be mindful of that, I mean, as attractive as you possibly can, you look forward to or for your issues.
Change is very difficult, very, very difficult. And in the very beginning of all of these mass donations, the initial Drew proposal was to put parking on the old Dr- the old Driftway. And, you know, keep the slope and all the rest of it. That's just more of the same. So that's why it had all been moved forward.
Yeah, the Drew company was going to be back, right?
Way back. And so it was all moved forward so that it is pedestrian access, the parking is in the back.
Yeah.
And the last thing we need to see is a pile of concrete or asphalt.
Because it actually feels a little bit more like it sort of, it it sort of plays to that if they've got the corners sort of cut.
Yes, yes, that's lucky attractive.
Yeah, this is, this meets that form-based code that we have designed.
Yes.
And it also, another thing we're hearing, you've got drift all the time with all these prices. People drive so fast, they're coming out of this, this has designed slow traffic, just another important piece of laws.
What comment?
Yeah, like can Steve or Ben, um I think the building looks awesome. Uh Steve, I think you had it right that on the corner that's going to go up towards the Drew property up Old Driftway. As you look at this plan right here, he's got porches. So the first floor, even though the setback is five, the building itself is actually set back further. So it's going to appear more open when you come up to that corner.
Yeah.
And um the fact that right on the corner itself, he's got the landscaping in there and the kind of chunk taken out of the building. I think it's going to be a pretty good asset to come in there. That's going to be a focal point right there. And I just have a couple of questions regarding, when I drive down there, I look at the Drew company, the next building up from this. And if you stand on the sidewalk and look at the Drew building, you're basically just looking straight up at one building almost the whole way up. And I noticed they have sliding glass doors there. I'm just curious, they can't fit a balcony in there.
They couldn't do that.
Yes, because there's like no room at all in that building. And you mentioned about the height on this, and I get it, these guys are meeting the height requirements. Um and obviously, they have to, so and if they're off by a foot or two, they'll adjust it to meet that. Um but do you know if this is higher or lower than the Drew building right next door?
We'll find out when they.
Let me bring it back.
And I would just say if they're, if if this building is lower than the Drew company or equal to the Drew company, they probably shouldn't get the same treatment, I would think.
Okay, now, obviously.
Um, but I I think it's really attractive.
Well, just please also be advised, the Drew company is permitted under a different set of rules.
Yeah. I I get that, but they need these rules, okay? They do meet the new rules with this project. And visually, when you're up there, nobody knows who was approved under the new or the old. They're just going to look at the buildings themselves. And I think that corner is going to blend in quite well with the Drew company.
Why am I anxious to see sort of a broader view?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it feels like discussion board. Yeah, you also would be surprised.
Appreciate the input. We've gotten a lot of valuable feedback here.
Great.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know when you come up with for the, the, yeah, the.
Do you know?
It's just, it's interesting, like.
I would think that they have a key that might possibly be used by the tenant.
Yeah.
Right. Otherwise, no one's a fan.
Right, you're going to have people pulling in, driving up their car, they shouldn't be driving.
But, you know, that's not how that works though.
I'm I'm not sure.
Be attracted to people who's commercially be charging all the time, right? And it's just whoever shows up, it's charged.
Yeah.
And it goes, and it goes here.
I was just interested.
Yeah, I I just would.
I mean, there's a whole.
Yeah, you enter all the information.
For all, it's all pretty well designed now, the credit card base to just pull it in, charge it, right?
And it goes actually, comes out to your electric bill.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you're putting your information, no matter where you are, it shows up. I mean, that should be good.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It doesn't cost you, John. It's a good part.
Yeah.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
By law, ours are a little behind. We have a K and R proposal.
G and B.
One of the first ones that we have, we have the applicants. Steve, what's up? Who was with you this morning?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry, not Maureen Hurley, and I am studying representing the applicants. I had um Joseph McCarthy with me, but he had to go over with the man, so he's sorry. So uh this is the K and R application that we filed. And the owner is Joe, who was here, and his wife is his mother, Catherine Kennedy, on this whole parcel right now. Um so we submitted her authorization letter. We think we've submitted, so the application form, the deed, the authorization letter, the two my lines, and 13 poppies. And a snapshot from the treasurer's device records indicating on tax, the property of the default. So the um the current, I don't, I I think the planner said she had gone by today and taken a look for the other day. And there are, there are two houses, I don't know many, the board members have had a chance to.
My neighbor.
You, you, excuse me?
I was at ninety-five.
Oh, okay. So the um the plan is that the, they have, the engineer is Mike Lancy. And he actually was asking what they wanted to do, three lot, you know, lots that's existing, two more. He do not, they just want one. So the mother is going to be in the main house. And this is her son, his wife, and two kids will be in the, in the new building. There is a building on there now that's going to be torn down. But son is the son, Mike Lancy, who's living there with his wife and two kids right now. So the plan is when they go, um they're going to ask the building inspector, they can keep it up until, I'm not sure how that works, whether they will be able to keep it up or not. While they build the new house.
You said that house over 100 years old is a mo?
Is the house that.
It's going to be taken down.
That's the barn. That's, yeah.
Then we're we're not really here to talk about buildings or anything else, all right?
No, no, no.
Just that it comes back down.
I'm just not telling you about it.
Especially if it's 100 years old, it has, it has a year, it has to stay there for the.
And it has construction access.
So that could propagate things, but.
It has access, the graphic driveway that is shown there, basically access is, is shown on parts of both lots. So technically, it does have access. I don't know, I mean, it's going to be up to the applicant in the future, either to do a common driveway or to find an app, find a driveway for each lot.
Right, but we don't, we're we're not here to talk about that.
But you have, but technically, right now, it does have the frontage and it does have the access, so therefore, it's ti- it's entitled to endorsement.
Good.
What's on that side?
Any comments, anybody, or a second?
For 111 First Paris Road. Um I believe to endorse as cool, not prepared, I have one in the time of situation. 111 First Paris Road, Act Accessory Parcels, forty-nine dash three dash five, chaired by Michael P. Lancy. PLS, PLS of CNG Survey Company. For applicants Kristen and Joseph McCarthy and owner Catherine M. Kennedy, dated May 20th, 2022. As the division unwilling to show on the common plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has permission of at least a distance presently required under the zone, uh under the situation zoning by law on the public way of First Paris Road and Common Street. With the planning board spam added that the planning board endorsed endorsement of the plan is not a determination of the performance of certain regulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Richard Second, please. Miss Alber, Miss Alber?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
So is, so is Marcy, the, Miss Barra?
Yes.
Okay, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need any of these copies still?
I agree. So we'll um, we will um let you know when the term of the import contract will come out, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Maureen, we've been a long time no see.
I know, nice to see you.
Now we have a discussion, the zoning proposal discussion, uh meeting, which now has been moved up two steps, Kevin, not keep. So that will.
The water treatment.
The earliest wet I remember.
Alright, so um the first one that I'd like to discuss is section seven fifty-one D two, setback, step back. And we we need to change this because there's misinterpret, people misinterpret the diagram. Because they don't understand that the height in the table is the, is the correct height. But it's not the height, it's not this height there, because the maximum height is what is in the table. So um I propose that we get this on the, on the, on the bylaw. Steve had sent in a comment that he wanted just a little bit clarification down where A is and where B is on the graphic. And I happen to agree with that, so hopefully, we can um figure out how to do that in our system. And um we'll try to get that done for the zoning workshop on the um twenty-third. But you see how important it is to get this diagram changed? Um that's, that's the first one. The second one is we had discussed um eliminating penthouses. And so I had a brief conversation with um Bob and Neil today. And um based on a comment from Steve as well. And I'll revisit this in the next week or two with Bob and Neil. They suggest eliminating number C and eliminating the whole penthouse thing on the back. So, so I'll just re-clarify that with them with them next week. But they thought that that's um, that would be the cleanest way to say that, you know, penthouses.
Works to me.
Okay, so.
Truthfully, somebody could build a penthouse, it just has to meet the height.
It has to meet the height requirement, yeah, absolutely. So um so I will, I'll fix that up for the zoning workshop on the twenty-third. And then we have um, there's been an interest in redoing the common driveway bylaw. I sent you um my first pass of that um with, I, my first pass was done in consultation with uh Paul Man. And based on what we, what we're seeing, and so those were just some of our, um stuff has been added. But we we looked at several other surrounding towns for what they're doing. So that's, that's where we came up with um the, the corrections we made in here. So I don't know where you want to start, um with, where you want to start with the comments.
Well, I guess, if you don't mind, I'll start, since these were my comments. So in the first instance, just on the applicability, it just seemed like it didn't tie to the uh the, the provided acceptable physical ad- access for the MGL chapter forty-one. So it just felt, felt like we needed to, if that's what we were really talking to, then we needed to have a certain tie back.
Right, I'll take, I'll take a look at that.
Um and then um. So I I guess the the fundamental change here is we're limiting the, the common driveway now of four hundred feet from a thousand.
Wait, hold on, there's a page. So we have all this crossed out. All common driveways should require a special permit. You had except for common driveways, was, was that in the bylaw or was that written, what's the new?
That's, that's already, that's in the bylaw. We want to take that out.
That's ahead, so they need to.
We want to make it so all common driveways require a special permit. Right now, a common driveway less than 500 feet serving, two lots can go through site planning and industry every year. And we want it taken that way.
And we're redefining common driveway, it's no greater than four hundred feet.
Correct.
Right, so that, there's actually two things going on.
Yes, those are the two major things.
So when you're doing four hundred feet, are you saying from the beginning of the lot, you're going over this with um somebody else? Here's the lot, it's common until it gets to that back lot, and then that's the end of the common driveway? Or are you carrying that four hundred feet to where that house is back there?
The common driveway has to be common where both people have access over it.
Okay, so it's stopping at the first, it's four hundred feet.
And so whatever that distance is, we're saying the maximum that can be is four hundred feet. We're changing it down from a thousand feet to four hundred feet.
And where did four hundred come from?
Four hundred feet was a number that we, we kind of, we kind of looked at some other bylaws. And we said it needs to be less than 600 feet, which is what you have in your subdivision regulations. So that's where a four hundred came. If you want it different than four hundred, now is the time to.
Are there, or are there towns, were they four or five? Usually it's four.
They usually have a four.
Did they, did they line up with their subdivision? So anything four hundred greater was a subdivision, anything less was a common reference?
It depends on how many lots they serve and, you know, it can't be used as frontage. Subdivision in road is creating frontage.
Mm-hmm.
But a common driveway, you already have to have the frontage.
Right.
But aren't you taking the frontage parallel to the common driveway?
That's the lot width, not not the frontage, the frontage.
Okay.
We different, we say, you know, on a common driveway. We differ, we say on a common driveway that your lot width can be measured parallel to the common driveway. But you still need the frontage on the road. A common driveway doesn't provide the frontage.
Right.
Also to um, the turnaround, the easement.
Mm-hmm.
Should be at the end of the four hundred feet, not somewhere in the middle of it. You follow what I'm saying Karen? In other words.
Well, if if your common driveway isn't four hundred feet, it should be at the end of.
That's right.
But I mean, it depends on where your.
At the end of the driveway.
It depends on where your common driveway is located, I mean, where the turnaround should be.
That's right, but not somewhere in the middle of it. As we saw at Pollard Street.
I think that that's a French translation.
What it, what does it say here? Is it, it just says uh, whatever the fire department says, right?
Right.
Well, wherever they put the turnaround, if it meets the fire department. But in some instances, it doesn't go the length of the common driveway. So it doesn't.
See, that's, that's what I'm saying, call on that is the fire department.
So if you know what.
If they, if they approve wherever they put it, then they've said they looked at it and it's adequate, right? So I I I'm not sure if we want to legislate, it has to be here unless the fire department's saying it has to be there all the time, right?
Right.
I think what Jen tried to say, Dan, is that if we have, say it's five hundred feet, we give special permit. We don't want the turnaround to be between two houses, it's going to be after the second house. So that's, and I don't know that we can really legislate that all the time, but that's certainly could be the decision, right? But I know what you're saying, it's sort of like.
So, so, well, let me just play devil's advocate here. So we, we have a four hundred foot common driveway and they put it two-thirds of the way down. And the fire department says, yes, that's acceptable, is that acceptable? Why, why would we say it has to be at the end?
You were not here for um, was it forty-seven Pollard Street?
I was here.
Oh, you were here, but remember the turnaround that they initially had? And they changed it fortunately, even though the fire department had proved it, was at the garage. Not where the, the common driveway was going to the entry of the lot.
I think that was a misinterpretation on the upper, and they, and they finally understood what we were saying. And I, I don't think that that was really missed on the upper, I think it was a misinterpretation. And you've fixed that, so we've all learned from that, so you can certainly.
Right, and that's where I'm coming from.
Yes, we should certainly move on from that, so that is.
Yeah, I'm just saying if we don't, we need to legislate that, if we, if something that we can.
Yeah, well, it's part of the special permit, so it will be fine.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, we have discretion there.
Yes.
On the fire department's.
Because once it's a special permit, we have control.
Okay, um, I suspect the same question about the four hundred feet. So um, is there reason to have a gap between sort of four hundred feet for common driveway and have a subdivision at six hundred?
Well, we just thought it made sense, I mean.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just trying to, I wasn't here for this conversation, so I guess I'm trying to figure that.
I do see, I have the five toss that I worked out for, it had four hundred feet. That was a pretty scary number across the board, everybody, if child's like ours that we, you know, line ourselves up with. That was a pretty common number.
I'm just cognizant of the fact that we're, we're chopping this in half, we're taking even more, right, so.
But also to.
It feels like four hundred might be a little short. And I've, I don't know why I'm saying that, but if you say six hundred is a subdivision, you know, maybe five hundred, twenty.
Keep in mind that we often waive the six hundred foot requirement on subdivision, do we not?
We do that in our discretion.
That's right, and this is in fact our discretion.
Well, no, no, what I'm saying is what we're doing is legislating a change here, right, from a thousand.
The four hundred. But keep in mind. But keep in mind, Steve, a thousand feet is a whole long driveway.
I, I know that, I know that, all I'm saying is, our starting point is a thousand feet, and if you're five hundred or less, you don't even need a special permit. Now we're going to four hundred feet and everything needs a special permit. That's a big change. And I, I just want to understand.
Our methodology.
You know, why we're, why we're going that far, I, I, four hundred is still, still a little short.
So you want to go five hundred?
I would go, I like five hundred. So I wish I, my concern about this was, was that um, we should try to run a social, you see these common driveways, which have five, six, seven houses, they have a thousand, two thousand feet, I'm.
Well, we can't do that here, right?
Which we get real histories to do, but that's what it was interested is about common driveway, which we see more and more of. Which are becoming more and more problematic for us after these get a squish. So we have to legislate that somehow, a special permit, that's really moving that for us. So I would say five hundred feet, we have to bring it down, well, I agree.
Yeah, I think that's fair, I, I guess one thing that I've been thinking about a lot, yeah, to answer your footage, sure, five hundred something.
Yeah, okay.
Add another hundred, it's, it'll be a little more liberal with it, it's fine. Um, one of the things I haven't think is obviously that you just brought up, how you, I think a problematic issue with your common driveways is like what you just said is where things become squished. And where common drives are, are sometimes, I mean, this is my opinion, they're sometimes used to create uh, residence, residences where otherwise a lot or two lots would be very challenging to build two houses on. And they're not necessarily, the, the purpose kind of comes secondary. However, there is a purpose to the common driveway, and it is a good one. It's to reduce and purpose services, create more, you have more rural, rural character of the, so the one kind of caveat I have is you, you could also, you know, potentially discourage common drives, or this, this is something that could happen. You could discourage them and then end up with two driveways, two access points where you otherwise could have one. And you could meet the more, you know, the nice things about the purpose of the common driveway, so that's just something, and unintended consequences that can happen. That I've been thinking about.
It happened over and again.
Yes.
Oh, but they didn't do a common driveway, oh, oh, you mean, yeah, they backtrack, yeah.
They backtrack. Again, I think the problem is, is again, is, is our discretion and how we deal with this kind of stuff and everybody keeping open mind and it's all, we're moving all the time, but I, I do think that we can discourage it. We can create unintended consequences, but let's not anticipate those, try not to, like hopefully you've got together come up with the best for the town, which is what I'm trying to, yes.
But I, I guess I'm trying to understand what Ben's saying here is that there may be value to having a longer common driveway possible than limiting everything to four hundred feet, but and in that case, what we're doing, if we you know, discuss this and pass this is we're sort of taking that off tape. Because it's, it's black and white, right, four hundred, five hundred feet, whatever the numbers. So I guess, I guess I guess I'm asking a question, do you think that we need to anticipate longer common driveways?
I think we shouldn't, yes, I think we do need to look at if this would do what Ben's saying, like you, we need, you don't want to pass a rule and nobody thought, oh, what kind of just.
Change, that's why we're discussing.
But, but, right, no, but again. What's our average point of that?
I didn't, I done that.
You haven't done that.
Any, how many do we have?
A lot.
We have a lot of common driveways.
And?
We have at least twenty-five.
At least twenty-five.
At least twenty-five.
Out of seven thousand houses, we got twenty-five, that's a lot.
We have, we have a lot of common driveways, I mean, these go back years.
So let me see if I understand, if we are going with a maximum of three on a common driveway, and it's by special permit, along with what Ben is saying, um, unintended consequences, would we be better served to back it down from a thousand to seven fifty? And then, so it's not the five hundred, but it's, Stevie, of course, has a comment.
If I can, if you make these special permits, you don't have to change any of this stuff. Because somebody can come in, you could say, I like it or I don't like it. The minute you start changing stuff, you're restricting yourselves. The developer's gonna find a way around it, but if you want us to use the common driveways, let us come in with a project. And if you like the project, you're gonna grant a special permit. If you don't, you're not gonna, so the toughest thing for a change in here, for me to swallow, is that now we're all at the mercy of whatever you want to give us for a special permit. Rather than coming in with a simple two lot driveway, now you can say no, no matter what we do. We can meet every one of these regulations, you can still say no. So why change any of them, except for to say they're all special permits? And then you get what you want.
Well, there you go.
I mean, that's the simple way out of it, and you, you, you know, I mean, because of Cohasset, they're not special permits. If you meet the requirements, you get it. Cohasset right now, you get eight units on a common driveway, okay, eight, alright? Kendall Village is a perfect example, right up next to Shaw's Market, it's beautiful, I did it, it's beautiful. Nobody's filed any complaints, it works out perfectly. Cohasset asked us to come back with more because they liked the way they worked out. Now they're trying to restrict and go back to, the planning board in Cohasset is now trying to come back and say, we want less houses served on the common driveway. But there's not really a basis for it, you know, they're, they're, if it's a special permit, you should be able to allow what you want to allow. You guys should be thinking, how far do you want to go with it, not how much do you want to take away? I mean, is there a reason, if we do a residential compound development, we can do five units on a common driveway. Well, the only difference is we have to set land area aside somewhere in the development, but we still get five units on a common driveway. On a, on a private access drive, which is basically built to the standards of a common driveway. So you, your unintended consequences that you're talking about, now is the time to figure out what they are. Before you make the changes, not after, and then go, oh crap, we never should have done that. Because you can't grant waivers if it's a zoning bylaw. So the more you restrict yourself, and you go, this would look great at six hundred feet, why do we just make it five hundred? You know, it's, it should be up to you guys what you want to do on the special permit. I disagree with that being a special permit, but if that's the way you want to go, we're gonna have to live with it as developers. I mean, Greg's in here with me as well, if, we're gonna be at the mercy on all of them. Fire truck turnaround, fire department can say, gee, we like it here, you guys can say, we don't like it, see if you can figure something else out with the fire department, and we'll figure something else out, whatever we gotta do, but I think you're tying your own hands is what you're doing. You're not, you're not stopping us from developing properties, you're making it tougher for you to say it's okay.
Some of the requirements that we added in here are comments that you have just been making on the common, some of the recent common driveway. You said on forty-six Hallid Street, you didn't like how close it was to the property line, so we put something in here. You said on five thirty-three Country Way, you didn't like the slope of the driveway, so we changed it in here. So some of the things that you're voicing your comments on, all we did is we put it in here. So if that's not what you want, then now is the time to say something.
But, for what, do you say, not that I would like to just to reach him? I really don't, at any rate, if we have this as a special permit, then we can ensure that it's not right on the property line. We can ensure that the slope is more than, is less than. And so we have that type of control.
Right, but you want to give criteria so they understand what they're trying to design to.
And I think that you don't want to open, if Steve said to like, well, where is on the board? Obviously, we have to have some kind of structure that's replaced before we just have everything be a special permit. And then suddenly just five other people, like you said, we don't like what they did, we're like, so we never went, we didn't, so we need some kind of, and all of this stuff is all the stuff that we have complained about for two years. So, and this is stuff that was incorporated into this, and while I appreciate your comment, Mr. Revlon, and I totally understand it, um, that doesn't, that doesn't help anybody by just having a lot of us, because, uh, what can I say something about?
Well, I mean, you've given your common driveway a minimum grade one percent, maximum grade seven percent. Is there anybody on the board that can tell me what the maximum grade of a subdivision road is in town? Think so?
Do you know?
It's greater than seven percent. So we can build roads deeper than we can build driveways. That doesn't make any sense, I mean, you, you really gotta look at all this stuff that can potentially happen when you make the zoning change. But again, if it's a special permit and for some reason, like on five thirty-three Country Way, there was one small portion that was over ten percent, fire chief said, I don't have a problem with that, I can get in there without a problem. He said, it's not eleven percent, you know, I mean, if you actually looked at the difference between ten percent and eleven percent, you're not gonna know the difference, I mean, over a hundred feet, it's this, that's, it's not significant. There's a lot of driveways that are over that, Highland Crossing is way over the requirements. But it's loud all the time, I don't hear of anybody having accidents going up or down Highland Crossing. Nobody sliding out into Thomas Clap Road, um, you know, this, this should be more lenient than your subdivision control law. It should be, the driveways. And I'm not saying that you can't have any changes, and I agree, should there be some type of a setback from a property line? There should, but if it's screened, then that should be able to be waived if there's a good screen in there, or if somebody has a fence in there. Depends on the driveway itself and where it is. It might be close to a property line, or maybe the house is eighty feet away on the other side. And it's all woods, so what's the difference, it's a driveway. Parkway was.
Parkway, the beginning of Parkway was, yes.
And part of that is actually on the neighbor's property, so it's been moved back onto this, onto the Christmas piece of property. But it's, but it's gonna be fenced, so it'll be, it will be screened, and yeah, it's close to the property line. I suppose if you came in and said, you know, it has to be five feet from the property line no matter what, then we, we gotta live with that. Uh, but there, there's just instances where you guys might want to say, it makes sense to do this, and we have the power to decide that. And, and we certainly can come in like we do on these driveways. Some of these things say, it's in the opinion of the planning board, what you want to see on these plans. If there's special permits now, at that point, you can then say, well, we really want to see this driveway moved five feet away, or eight feet, or ten feet, or whatever it happens to be, in a particular instance. But once you set this in stone, and I think Karen's point too, that, you know, we need to be able to figure out how to start with a driveway, what's reasonable for a driveway. But if we know these are special permits, the developers are gonna do the best they can to try to figure out what the best driveways are, and then leave it up to you guys to say, it makes sense or doesn't make sense.
Well, I think it makes sense to have a certain set of standards. And you can't have a common driveway bylaw that says, we'll, we'll know it when we see it, right?
Then, then, then this should say in it that the planning board has a right to waive some of these standards without a variance. Because otherwise you have to go to the zoning board of appeals, we will never get a variance from anything in here. So if you can implement something saying that one or more of these requirements may be altered by the planning board in special instances, that leaves free to you guys to say, alright, this makes sense, we can do this, and from a developer's standpoint, we'll work with that. Without going for variance, but we just know we're not gonna get them on a, a new construction or anything like that, they can't get it to us. Whipple room is good.
Well, I, I would ask that everybody really look at this this week, and I need your comments by Thursday, so that I can incorporate them to proceed with the zoning workshop on the twenty-third. Time is tight here, we have to have the public hearing on July fourteenth in order to accommodate the advisory board schedule and for the town meeting on September fourteenth. If you decide by next time that you don't want it, you don't, you're not ready for it, then we can pull it, but the warrant, the warrant's open, and I'm gonna put placeholders in for three articles. But I really need you to give me your comments.
So we have homework?
Yes.
Can we try to give my guys a shot of this here?
You can give me some comments.
Okay.
I mean, yes, you can give me some comments you have until next Thursday. You might, you might.
I'll, I'll get together with Greg and we'll just.
But you have to understand, the board is not happy with all the stuff. But you have to understand, the board is not happy with all the stuff they're saying on the common driveway plans that are coming in.
I'm not against change, but it starts to have good change.
But that's why we're here is because, you know, we struggle with this. Oh, I can never.
And we're not arguing, we're not arguing. We're just trying to figure out the best way to change it so it works for everybody.
Yeah, like I said, so it's, 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 it's difficult at, at the very best to, to do this stuff. Karen, we said, do you want us to do that for the, do we have another? Maybe more, so we.
No, we just have, we just want the three articles for town meeting. Right, this one, we, we want to work on other things, but because we don't have the time at this point to, to do that for picking, you're picking the things that have been problematic. On, on several projects. That's why you're picking these things now.
Everybody do their homework and get everything into Karen. Line two is good.
Yes, ma'am.
I was a school teacher, I checked.
No doubt. You can rub these where.
So we have all business, new business, correspondence, management, so now we have liaison assignments. So if everybody wants to keep what they have, that's fine. However, people really need to stop going to their meetings. It really stopped paying attention, especially with this water type coming in. This is going to affect a lot of things. And I think at some point that's going to go to the public buildings. It's going to hopefully come to us, as long as it's going to be everywhere.
Water treatment.
Water treatment.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, you know, that's, that's best coming. So does anybody want to drop their assignment or change their assignments?
Not me. Okay.
How are we doing on the chat again, Rebecca?
Oh, I did that. Um, that, that went well.
Is it done?
I think it took a blast. No, they only wanted to do one more thing with it. Um, but it's almost done.
Is she there? Okay, would you be advisory?
We'll say never. But Michelle's shown this year, I think once.
I will try. It's, well, I think at least half of them I would consider.
Okay, I, I. Yeah, I guess, yeah, because they need those.
Doesn't take much of a planning board.
Um, I do try to get the second to the, yeah. And we can't watch this. So everybody's okay with what they have, so we don't need to change anything for our liaison. That, that will work out well. Uh, like I said, um, I'm, I am unhappy that our liaison from the planning board just up for this, what's selected does not come here. We don't like it because it does either. Especially with Zoom and Facebook and everything, there should be more interaction. Um, obviously to be a little bit higher. So if we could approve the minutes, please.
We have no minutes to speak.
Excuse me?
No minutes to speak.
I know, but it's never. How about a copy? So I, I am a little so approved. I'm a little proof of requisition of one hundred thirty nine dollars and seventy eight cents to W P Mason for office spots, including paperless.
Ms. Weber?
Yes.
Your secretary. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. DeBorsing?
All right, Ms. DeBorsing.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Launfair.
So then we have our liaison reports. Um, I did listen to conservation and I would encourage everybody to go back and listen to the last meeting. You could take about thirty nine hour drive.
At the swimming pool?
That's the swimming pool. And conservation had a lot to say about their pool and that could be beneficial to us in the upcoming meeting. For, um, your mind. So, so what did they say?
So what's, what's this, what do you think?
They talked a lot about what, what you should use for the underneath and how you should fill it and how it should be, uh, take the water up and how you decide what you, they did, uh, they did continue it. But conservation had a lot of really insightful things, a lot of pub, uh, they did use a lot of questions that were not answered, but a lot of things that we should be taking up on the same issue. And, and about should come forward with us. Uh, this is certain kind of block you're supposed to use. But I do need to sit or paring into the ground. So we have to go back and listen to, and, and yet, but that's obviously. One thing, instead of digging this thing, if you put this giant, like they almost sound like sisters or something, like these big blocks that sit, you want to dig it, so do it to the ground. If you then want how much water is in the pool, what are we going to get? So. So the other issue is that, um, one twenty one Jericho was continued. One oh seven Turner, instead of new driftway, this opening continued without a word. So I, I don't know what's going on. I, they're going to come to us about this with town. We're going to sit, going to wait for them. So there was no, um, no other reason is, is true.
Well, you have a, you have a memo sort of from seven on seven driftway, but the building is okay, the location is okay. You just don't have a formal vote of the conservation commission that the building location is okay. But the directive I'm given right now is that the building location is okay.
That was not at all clear. I think by the setting you asked, but it was, um, um, and, and the reason in rebuild of one twenty one Jericho, um, these are all just, they, they went kind of fast through. The other thing is they was, um, Chief Sherman Park, they have a new fence and handicap spot that Steve reached for it before they got it zoned across. So currently that's going along. So that's from zone, that's from conservation. Zoning, um, they're having a meeting on Holdover Bucket on the twenty second, uh, in the high school. I, I think it's in the library, in the old library, I don't know what you, you said new, put that in order. I put on the one because I have a liaison and I am too. But if we have another person, we need to post a meeting. It is more of us. So if you want to know, I mean, I, maybe the options, we should post a meeting. If you can, you show up. Does anybody else have an interest in hearing what's going on at Holdover Bucket? It's the twenty second.
That's Wednesday.
What time?
Seventh second.
Yeah, thanks.
Is Zoom open?
I'm going to say no. I, I don't know. I don't know. I'll have to check.
On Zoom. What?
Yes.
Oh, is that the same? Yes.
Into Zoom, okay.
It's, it's Zoom and in person. And it is at, um, seven P M on Wednesday, the twenty second in the library at the high school.
Is there a notice that you can just send around?
Absolutely. I can tell you the date, yeah.
So do you want us to post? I would suggest that we post in case we have a chance if three or four of us do show up.
We'll watch on Zoom.
We'll watch on Zoom.
We have not written any comments from the planning board.
No.
And I know that there's.
Well, we don't know anything about.
I, I sent you all the plans a while ago.
The water treatment plan?
No, no, this is talking about the water treatment plan. We're talking about.
Oh, I thought, I think we're talking about.
No, it's for the forty B.
Oh, this is for the forty B, sorry.
Yeah. This is for, this is for the forty B, but we don't know anything about the water treatment plan, so. They're coming up with new places to put it, even as we see.
I mean, I made a comment before that they didn't, you know, that they need, they need, I said as a town planner comments that they need to respect the water. I didn't see where meeting the water protection district requirements made the project uneconomical. And I said they needed to submit water stuff that was requested in the project eligibility letter.
I wonder if they've done that.
No, news, nothing that has been submitted except a revised traffic study, which was, they submitted a draft traffic study. We got the final traffic study, which I think that's the only new thing that I know that's been.
And then the question of traffic rules was, that traffic study may have been done when the road was under construction.
Right.
Which really made a lot of sense.
So, I mean, the planning board should think about if, if people go to that meeting and if you want to provide comments after that meeting, then the planning board needs to let me know so I can start drafting something for your comments. This, a forty B has a hundred eighty days to make a decision. Where it was submitted March thirtieth. They're already coming up on ninety days and they don't even have the period due. So, let me know.
Do you have anybody else with liaison?
Wait, can I go back to this liaison? Because you guys tell me to go into a meeting every Wednesday.
When come here, like.
You're on your empty waterway.
I'm not, definitely not going to show personally, but I see. I didn't know that's still going on, but.
Then they don't.
That's every other Wednesday I'm doing that.
They don't mean every other Wednesday, but they still mean.
I don't know how to deal with.
I don't know, fish, and I don't know what to do with water fish.
What about housing trust?
I, I, then I'm, I will go back to housing trust. I like housing trust. And I find we go to waterways commission, but not one of us.
You're also in the condition of disabilities.
I've never been to that.
And I don't know that you're.
That's awesome. That's also one of my.
Don't you know, don't you know if you're having this.
Not enough Wednesday.
The, the one I say with, with Zoom and continue is that anybody who cut it through here, which is cut it by, so then, and I do watch a lot of this stuff, that's good. I'm still retarded, it's not that, it's fresh TV.
All right, um, that's a lot, so.
Yeah, I, I understood, yeah, yeah.
C P C needs Monday night, so we don't have anything real to report, but I do understand that, uh, and I thought we had gone it, no, um, for the beach nourishment from the city to it, big bucks, four million to nourish the beach.
Because that would say about, yeah, that's what Portugal, okay.
Really?
Goes over the spade, and he dredged it out and then put it to me.
Well, I, 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 I can't do that anymore. I, unfortunately, a literal Spanish story they got Facebook today is, uh, they can nourish, uh, city in Cohasset. They literally go across to report, just so they should ask everybody, sit like crazy, like why can't we do that? Uh, but they do that every year down in Cohasset. Or they go right to the other side to a little, uh, report that, uh, a little thing, because we need married, so.
Well, it's between, the, the issue with D P W, they have the undercoarse engineers, they have, um, environmental protection, they have all kinds of coastal zone management. There are all these different entities and everybody, if one says you could do with the other one says you can't. And it, they just, it's alchemics by one another.
Is my beach even open this year? I mean, are the, are the lifeguards there this year? I'm usually the lifeguard, I'm usually the lifeguard at grasshopper because there, there's no, because that beach is considered not open. Because the stairs don't work.
The stairs.
Kick it off.
The stairs, so, okay. So that's, um, also too, we're going to be discussing the ball field. I, I think the general consensus is going to go over by central, central park. But there is still further, according to Kevin Cafferty, he's still looking at redoing or whatever, the ball field behind the old gates. So I don't know what they're up to. Nobody talks to anybody.
Well, the really interesting thing about that ball field is they want irrigate, perish, supposedly there's an irrigation system there existing.
Yes, there is.
And I don't know how we could improve that.
We can't.
Well, that's just. And because they actually are walking away from, I mean, from, uh, artificial turf.
Because C P C that they are.
Yeah.
So that's all I know.
And for the town planner has what to tell us?
Um, I sent you all the parking plan for the senior center. I think it seems most convenient for us and for them to put it on the agenda for next week. I mean, the twenty third, not next week. We have a very busy agenda on the twenty, on the twenty third. With our, we have five thirty three Country Way. We have a common driveway for ninety three L. We have a common driveway for eight hundred First Parish. Um, we'll have the senior center, we'll have a zoning workshop, and we'll probably have an A and R.
Metaphor, yes.
And for your sleeping bed. So, so I think.
So we'd put them at, around midnight, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just, I, I'm not going to have decisions for all these ready. It's, it's physically impossible. So we have some priorities and that's five thirty three Country Way.
Can you also just question what we had talked about in private is that, um, if our consulting engineer is not available, I don't feel it is fair for us to hear that without his expertise. Is, is anybody getting agreement or not agreeing with that?
And he's not available to produce?
No, if he's not available to come to the meeting, then what, perhaps we're just going to have to postpone that.
Just continue that because it's kind of un, unfair for, for me to sit without a professional engineer telling me why you made the decision not. Is that acceptable to everybody? Or it's what you want, it's what you want. No, I, it's all to the board, it's all with which it's tested, but I.
Well, it's certainly preferred to have it here.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if he's, if he's done the analysis, you know, we're going to have a one-sided conversation.
Yeah.
And say, well, we have to go back to John or whoever it is.
But we're taking it to a tight one, so.
I mean, great being a case by case basis because there's, there's going to be some things that are comments that fairly benign that I don't think, you know, just to make it easier for scheduling, that we need to work, work on another person's schedule. However, if we know there's going to be some sort of contentious issue or there's a, there's already, there's already a disagreement that's coming to the surface, then I think probably everyone that at that meeting are present. So we're not making judgment called on things that we don't have expertise in.
Correct, and well said.
But I don't know how we get the term.
Well, we'll put it to them, I guess.
We'll know, we'll know.
Oh, no, we'll see it.
And maybe that's, maybe that's a caveat. If our engineer isn't here, this will probably be completely finally necessary, or just.
All right, so, um, there's a six, a walk at Toll Brothers at nine A M on six twenty three. Um, this is a walk to see where we are with the project and, um, if more than three people coming, then we need to post, which this, this is nine A M. This walk is going to be.
It's over an hour.
It's going to be, it's, it's probably two to three hour walk.
It's, it's, we, we don't go down, it's usually at least two hours to get the walk.
It's, it's usually at least two hours because, I mean, we're getting to the point in the project now where it's, we need to start putting our foot down. Like I've been putting my foot down, but you know, the basins, none of the basins a hundred percent work. It's never going to have been verified to drain within seventy two hours. They're all silted up. You know, last year we had a procedure that they were going to do test pits. And then, you know, I've been told that Bowler is going to go out there and do the test pits and then give us the data. And that's not what was agreed upon last time. So this is, this is kind of an important sidewalk. I haven't got a SWIP report from them since March. They had, uh, I had a complaint yesterday where our water was going off site and Amy Waki and I went down there yesterday afternoon. And they swore to me that it wasn't their water. And I said, of course it's your water. It was going right down the street, missing the catch basin, going around the curb, going into the woman's backyard. And the guy walks off the roadway and sings to his music, but then he believed me that it was his water.
You can't make this up.
And you can't, we're big guys, we don't lean down.
We're getting to the point where they don't anticipate being down with the houses till December. But, you know, it's starting to, the residents are getting real nervous. So.
The landscaping's bad.
The landscaping, and thus, thus, we're talking about landscaping too. I keep reminding them that they haven't planted the additional plants over on the east side of Happy Road, um.
More stuff's failing too this season.
Yes. All right, on six twenty eight, I will be going to.
I, I, I'm going to be at the meeting on twenty second, planning board on the twenty third, I just, I don't have enough time, so I won't be there.
Right. So I won't post then, no. On six twenty eight, there's going to be a roadway safety audit from, um, Henry Turner Bailey to First Parish. So that's kind of an important, um, meeting that, um, Mass T O T is coming to situ it and, um, I'll keep, I'll let you know. But, you know, I'll be going to that. It's kind of like what we did at the Rotary. Back to Seaside, one person wants to extend their deck at Seaside. I'm going to let them know that I believe that's a homeowners association issue, but I think that that is going to be really problematic if everyone wants to start extending their decks.
Isn't that already, wasn't that already addressed in the, I was.
I don't really think so. I looked at the conditions today. I will relook at the conditions. I don't really think so, because.
The conditions reference the set drawings.
Yeah, and I looked at the drawings and the drawings don't show all the decks and the patios.
They put those, put those in there.
They put those in for the building permit flats. So.
We had something that addressed that.
I would, I would double check.
I thought there was some limit to, to what could be done.
I would double check the conditions.
I think it's homeowners, that too.
Part of, yeah.
I think a lot of it is, I mean, most homeowners condominiums like that, it's the homeowners association, you can't do it.
Right, and so.
Or you can, but usually you can't. Or you can, but usually you can't.
Right, well, so I, I'm going to tell him, his first course of action is to go to the homeowners association. And, but I just wanna, I knew we were, this has come up in the past two days, I, you were having a meeting, I just wanted to get your input. We did get some information on the pool on Anne Vinyl, I have not had a chance to look at it. You, last time you said you wanted the information submitted and then it to be peer reviewed prior to it coming back to you. Is that still the board's desire?
Yeah, and it needs to, I think, address this home.
Okay, so then, um, that's where we are, we remain quite busy. And, um, this is gonna be a busy summer.
And I shall educate a moment, uh, I'll show to some.
Second, I have a number of questions, there's.
Yes, this is to be okay.
Can you back up to the consultant, um, conversation that you had, where if a consultant's not available, then the applicant's the one that's gonna end up being delayed again because the consultant can't make it?
Well, that's gonna be on a case by case, and we're, like Ben said, that's only gonna be if we know that this something needs action, it's not for every single project. Only if we know there's a huge issue.
And the only reason I say that is there are, um, consulting firms that have a number of people that work at the firm. And I think that they can send somebody to that meeting for the final. And there are some consultants that work by themselves that might have other meetings in other towns. Uh, so, I, I would hope that the planning board would start to look at this consultant situation and try and get, allow us to get three quotes and, and choose a quote from there. Um, some of the new ones this week, some other towns do it. Uh, if it's over a certain amount of money, I think it kind of has to be done that way, I'm not positive. But I've been told that if a, if a quote comes in over a certain amount of money, you're required to get a number of quotes on it. Um, but I think in all fairness to the applicants when they come in, um, there should be a number of different things to look at. The, the numbers that we're looking at, uh, again, range on projects that are, if it's a single family project, these numbers have ranged from twenty seven hundred dollars to do a review to ten thousand dollars to do a review. I, I think it's unfair for the applicant to be told who their consultant is gonna be. I think there should be a number of quotes when the numbers get that high.
We will take that out of the question.
Thank you.
There you go. So shall we?
We.
Second.
I have to go home, I have to go watch the.
I'm there, um.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks for stuff, but, but, yeah, we'll see.
There you go.
So, hi.